Not all just.
Yeah, definitely.
You're totally like. Fun. To order the June 11 regular meeting of the Gorham School Department. If we can all stand for the pledge.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call.
Mia De Sanctis.
Here.
Michelle Littlefield.
Here.
Sarah Perkins. Jackie Reynolds.
Here.
Eric Thistle.
Here.
Jennifer Whitehead.
Here.
And Nicole Yeo Fisher.
Here. I'd like to take a moment to take something out of the agenda, make an announcement out of the agenda tonight. Given her final role call, I would like to take a moment to celebrate and honor the extraordinary career of Rhonda Warren, who is retiring after an incredible 40 years of dedicated service to our school department. Rhonda has attended over more than 400 school committee meetings, prepared over 1,000 hours worth of meetings and agendas with exceptional precision and care, but her impact goes far beyond these numbers. Rhonda brought to her role a tremendous wealth of knowledge, unmatched expertise, and a deep commitment to the mission of our school department. Her guidance, institutional memory, and attention to detail have been invaluable to superintendents, school committee members, and colleagues throughout the years. Simply put, Rhonda has been our backbone. While we will miss her presence dearly, we are so very happy for Rhonda as she steps into this new chapter of her life. She has more than earned this time to rest, explore, and enjoy life beyond the work that she has so faithfully done. Quite simply, thank you, Rhonda, for everything.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to 1.3 approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May 14 and the special meeting of May 28, 2025. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 14 and the special meeting minutes of May 28 as presented.
Do we have a second? Second? Okay. Vote? All those in favor? Great. Moving on to 2.0 administrative reports. 2.1 principal and director administrative reports. Any questions or comments? Again, thank you so much for the folks that put a lot of time and effort into these reports and considering it's the final one of the year, thank you so much to all of our administrators and DLT members. 2.2 program review presentation of the village school students. Assistant Superintendent Donahue.
Yes, and I will quickly, I will quickly turn it over to Jody Mezzanotti. Or Cheryl Fodder. Who will be sharing the presentation, the students will be sharing presentation of learning outside of the classroom, right?
Yes. Thank you for having us. We're very excited. Village school students have been working hard here. We are going to talk about learning beyond the classroom. This will be part of, I think if we turn towards, yeah. This will be field trips and it will be special visitors that we have coming in around the curriculum.
We know learning new things at school is super important and our classrooms are fun and exciting places to do that. But guess what? Some of the best learning happens when we get to do hands-on activities or when a special guest comes to visit us. This year, we've had so many awesome learning adventures and we wanted to share just a few of our favorites with you. Each year kindergarten visits the fire station to learn all about fire safety and meet the amazing firefighters who help us keep us safe. We get to see their special gear, explore the fire trucks, and even learn what to do in case of a fire. The fires were kind and helpful and we were so glad we got to spend time with these important community helpers. Violet Hunter, what did you like about the fire station?
Fire trucks. They taught us how to stay safe and get out of fire easily.
First grade students had an exciting trip to the Maine Children's Museum in Portland. This special visit helped bring our classroom, classroom learning to life as we explored topics like community helpers, lights, sound, and animal life cycles and fun hands-on ways. At the museum, students had a blast experimenting with lights, shadows. They used flashlights and mirrors and colorful materials to see how light moved and changed. They also explored the world of community helpers by pretending to be doctors, firefighters, and even grocery store workers in the museum's amazing play spaces. It was a fun-filled day of learning, discovery, and imagination. Samantha and Augie, what was your favorite activity at the children's museum?
Water park.
The climbing wall.
Our second graders had an awesome time learning about the ocean animals with the help of some amazing visitors from our community. In this photo, you can see Meg John, friend of the economy school, showing us real ocean animals. We learned how to sort animal creatures into different groups and talked about how we can help take care of the ocean. It was fun and an exciting way to learn. Emma and Evy, what was your favorite ocean animal that you saw?
A sea urchin because we got to hold one.
To conclude, our social studies unit on Gorham history, all third graders got to visit the amazing Baxter House Museum. Our tour guide, Mrs. Ennis, knew so much about our town and shared lots of cool and surprising facts. We explored rooms like the parlor, the war room, music room, the kitchen, and even went up a spiral staircase to see the bedroom. One of the, one of the favorite spots was the kitchen where we saw a dry sink, a brick oven, butter mold, and the original toaster. So many students said they want to go back this summer to see with their families. Simone Alden and Juliana, what did you enjoy most about visiting the Baxter House?
Music room.
Playing an almost 200-year-old piano.
On the bedroom.
Our fifth graders had an exciting trip to the Ocean Map Library at USM Portland Campus. While we were there, we got to see many different maps of Maine. Some were very old and showed how our states looked a long time ago. It was so cool to see how maps have changed over time. One of the most interesting parts of our visit was learning about places in Maine with Wabanaki names. We did a fun activity where we matched these names to different locations on the map and learned what some of these names mean. It helped us better understand the history of Wabanaki people. The trip was a great way to connect what we've been learning in social studies to the real world and it made us even more curious about the stories behind the places we see every day. Charlotte and Royer, what did you enjoy about the Ocean Map Library?
I enjoyed looking at the historical maps because there's so many landmarks they made on them.
Choice room because we got to make maps.
In fifth grade, we were lucky enough to have lots of fun learning experiences outside the classroom. In the fall, we visited the telling room in Portland where we got to be creative and write our own stories. We do a special activity called the word walk, placing words around the city then writing about them. In the winter, we go to the Gulf of Maine Research Institution. There, we become scientists for the day, learning about ocean, the ocean, climate change, and how data can be used to solve big problems. In the spring, we team up with the eighth graders from the middle school for the Amazing Race. We work together to solve clues around town, visit local businesses, and practice introducing ourselves and asking great questions. It's a fun way to learn about our community. Ryan Madline, what was your favorite field trip this year?
My favorite field trip was the telling room because it taught me a new way to express myself.
My favorite field trip this year was the Gulf of Maine because I get to measure the lobsters.
Thank you for walking down our memory, memory lane of learning beyond the classrooms with us this evening. We are so lucky to have these opportunities to learn inside of our school and outside of our community.
All so much. Are there any questions or comments for our guest speakers?
I have a question. Did you really get to play a 200-year-old piano and were you nervous that you might break it? Yeah. That's so cool.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a comment, I just want to say thank you so much for coming out tonight and presenting for us. This really made my whole week. I love seeing the students and everything that you're doing in the classrooms and outside of the classrooms and I'm so proud of being part of Gorham and seeing our students doing so many wonderful things and what amazing communication skills you all have. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you so much. It isn't easy to come up here and talk in front of everybody, so kudos to all of you. Very proud of you. It sounds like you all had some pretty great experiences this year, so thank you so much. You are welcome to stay, but you do not have to. But thank you again so much for coming in tonight. We can do another round of applause. Great job. Moving on to 3.0 communications. 3.1 public comment. Would any members of the public like to make comments? All right. Seeing none, moving on to 3.2 student, student council member Lola.
We had spring sports award night on June 4th where many incredible athletes were recognized, academic awards ceremony, which was held on May 20th. Students had their final exams this week heading into summer with the last day of exams being June 12th and a makeup day in June 13th. Today was the middle schoolers' step-up day and we had eighth graders come to the high school and learn where everything was. And Gorham High School Class 2025 graduated last Sunday, June 8th, and we are so proud of our seniors.
Great. Any questions or comments for Lola? Excellent. Thank you so much, Lola. 3.3 superintendent, assistant superintendent Donahue.
Yes, so Superintendent Perry is not here tonight. She's actually in Washington DC, meeting with our senators advocating for Maine schools. So I have her report for you. First is an update on our federal funds based on current information for the federal fiscal year, which begins in October. Local entitlement funding will remain flat at the federal level, as will ESEA funding. This may result in slight fluctuations either up or down in the amounts allocated to individual SAUs, but no significant changes are anticipated. However, the proposed budget reduces the overall cost to support education at the federal level by consolidating several smaller grants from individual titles into single, less-funded block grants that will be distributed to each state. The more I, more she follows these, those conversations, the more that she believes that they will not receive, we will not receive the Title II fund moving forward. Those funds typically used to support teacher professional development and we get around $80,000 annually from those funds. This is something to be mindful of as we enter FY26. We have a plan to account for these shifts, so we should be fine, but if that's all we see, we'll continue to monitor the federal budget approval process moving forward. Also, speaking of federal funding, we're required to notify the public of their right to comment on the way the Gorham School Department utilizes ESEA funds. Earlier this year, on April 30th, there was a presentation that I gave to the school committee on the ESEA funds and how we utilize those said funds. If the public wishes to comment on ESEA funds directly, please do so by June 25th and you can do so by emailing me, Quinton Donahue. As the state legislature rushes to try to close by June 18th, there are several bills that we're watching that could have financial implications moving forward. One such bill that I would like to draw attention to is LD 653, a bill that would allow teachers in Maine to qualify for overtime. This bill, if passed, could have significant financial impact, especially in rural Maine. It would also go above and beyond what federal labor laws state, which is that teachers are currently not eligible for overtime pay. Of course, we want to make sure we support our teachers, however, this is not the way to do it on the backs of our local taxpayers. This has been communicated to our local legislative delegation and we'll continue to follow it. With the budget passing yesterday, we'll begin our finalizing the implications and everything is scheduled to start on July 1st, 2025. Students and staff are looking forward to the coming summer break. A reminder, the last day of school is for both is Friday, June 13th. We'll bring new staff back for the 25, 26 school year on Friday, August 22nd, and then all staff will return for two PD days on August 25th and 26th before school resumes for students beginning on August 27th. We wish all of our staff members an awesome break, full of rest, relaxation, and thoughtful reflection that you deserve. Please hold a place on your calendars for the evening of July 16th. We might need to hold a very quick meeting, special meeting that night for hiring purposes. So everybody, if you could, please just pencil it in. And finally, via our extended learning opportunities, grant this summer, Gorham High School teachers are invited to work on strengthening curriculum to integrate Spire-related experiences into their lesson planning. Stipends will be offered and can't wait to see what great ideas our high school staff come up with. And that is all.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Donahue. Any questions or comments? All right, great. Moving on to 3.4 school committee. Jen.
I just want to say thank you so much, Gorham, for coming out and voting and supporting the budget. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And congratulations to our seniors. Oh my gosh. I just love how our town celebrates them so much. I was able to see the parade that they did and yeah, I'm just really proud of them all. I knew a lot, I know a lot of the 2025 graduates, so it was a specially meaningful class for me.
Great. Thanks, Jen. Mia?
Yes, I want to also say thank you to all of our community members who took the time to go out and vote yesterday. It was very important. Also, thank you to all the staff for another successful school year. And I wanted to say thank you and the best of luck to the district retirees. We are very grateful for your years of service and wish you well in your next chapter.
Great. Thanks, Mia. Eric?
Thank you. I wanted to just say a personal quick thank you to Rhonda, who I've only recently met, but it's clear from the impression that you've made on everyone that you've done a great service for the town of Gorham, so I really appreciate it. I know we all do. So thank you very much and best of luck.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Michelle?
Yes, so just to echo everyone's sentiments about the budget, I want to share my appreciation. I want to especially appreciate those folks who attended our meetings and, you know, followed the process from start to finish. There's a small group of people that are very involved in support of our school budget who worked incredibly hard to spread the word and combat false narratives about this budget. So to those people, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for showing up on the street corners and wherever else you were. We are so thankful for you. And then I just also want to make a comment about the number of folks that we had in our, in this referendum vote, there was an increase. I think I heard that we were just a couple hundred votes shy of Portland's numbers. To see that level of engagement, no matter how, which way you're voting, I think is amazing. It's incredibly important to vote in your local elections. And lastly, I just want to make sure to make the statement that, you know, the folks that are sitting up here, speaking for myself especially, understand the burden that the taxpayers are facing. We talked about it at length. We know that we have more work to do. We are working really hard to do that work and to bring forward the best budgets that we can, that are the most affordable and the most creative to find ways to cover costs. So we hear the voices of those people saying, please do what you can. We are trying. We've tried very hard and, and I feel like this budget that we ended up with is just the best possible scenario, so thank you to our community for all of your support.
Thanks, Michelle. Jackie?
My comments are not dissimilar to those ahead of me, but being newer to this community and new to this committee, I'm really thankful for and impressed by all the work of all the people sitting up here and so many more because the budget is a long process. It takes a lot of time to understand and a lot of work and it was a very difficult thing, the cuts that we did have to make and we got through it together. I'm just, I'm really thankful. And I'm also super impressed with the voter turnout. We had so many more voters than other kind of neighboring towns that have bigger populations than us, so the level of engagement in Gorham is really impressive to me. I'm really happy to be a part of it. I very much hope that that level of interest will translate to more people coming to the meetings and sharing their ideas because if you get involved earlier in the process, that is the best way to get your ideas heard and make your suggestions that clearly you have. So hopefully in the fall, we will see a lot more people at the meetings. That would be the most helpful thing and we could, you know, get through this process without as much tension, but still it's wonderful that so many people turned out, so let's keep that going. And I also am thankful to the great Fall staff and community because they did a remote learning day so that we could all go there and vote. And I'm sure that that was a very tricky thing to pull off. Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Jackie. I'll echo the same thing. Thank you very much to the voters and the folks that came out for the folks that helped to support this budget. You know, it's very important for our town to continue to support this, so thank you to those folks. Thank you to our teachers, to our administrators, to our bus drivers, to all of those folks as we wrap up this school year. It's just quite amazing what these folks do for our kids every single day and we, we don't forget that, especially the folks sitting up here. So thank you so much for all that you do and for a great year. Hopefully you all get to enjoy your summer. Similar to Jen, to kind of congratulate our graduates, our seniors, it was a really great graduation ceremony. I also wanted to recognize parents who worked on Project Graduation for our seniors. I was able to get a taste of what that looks like and helping at one of the locations and it was blowing my mind, everything that was put together for these seniors to have a really great experience. So I wanted to recognize all of their effort and work that they did to put on that event. So thank you. Moving on, 4.0 school committee standing and special committees. 4.1 finance and facilities. Michelle?
Yes, so we had our meeting, our last meeting on May 28th. It was a pretty full agenda. First, we reviewed some proposals. Norm presented some proposals specifically paying funds toward a bus lease so that we could get our total price under the $100,000 price point, which allowed us to kind of avoid some legal fees, which comes with when we have items that are above that price point. So we approved that and moved that forward. We also did another review of our revised 10-year capital plan, so you all, I think, have seen the latest version of that. We've made, you know, a number of changes to that list, but the, this version, it was agreed will go to the full school committee for approval at the June 25th meeting and then pending, you know, that it would move forward for the bond in November. And we'll see also kind of what the town has for input on that list as well. We reviewed our monthly financial statements. This time of year, it's, that's an interesting process because we're kind of like right at the end and so we get to see what's remaining, but all looks good and no concerns there. We did also review our substitute classroom coverage report, which is no surprise to the folks up here. I think that that is one of the areas that we're still continuing to monitor. It tends to, you know, there's expenditures and costs associated with the number of substitutes in classroom coverage that we have. We also reviewed our warrants and overtime reports and reviewed the credit card statements. And that was that. So our next meeting is scheduled for June 25th at 6:00 PM in the superintendent's office.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Questions, comments? All right, great. Moving on, 4.2 policy. Mia?
Yes, we also met on May 28th. The majority of what we discussed pertains to the policies that are up for second read tonight, so I'm going to talk more in detail about them at that time when we get to that in the agenda. And our next meeting is scheduled for June 25th at 6:00 PM in the assistant superintendent's office.
Thanks, Mia. Questions or comments for Mia? All right, great. Moving on to 4.3 personnel. Michelle?
Yes, so our last meeting was on May 27th. We use that time in that meeting to review some of our communications that we have already been sent at this point related to our communication plan. That included our letter to the editor that we had developed and just as a bit of anecdotal feedback, I heard from folks in the community that they appreciated the additional communication this year as part of the process. So, so that was great feedback to hear. We also took some time, Dr. Donahue reviewed the hiring process and we looked at some of the capabilities within frontline, I believe it's called, our HR hiring system. And we looked at some hiring data, which was very interesting. We talked a little bit about the process and, you know, what we're going to look at next school year in terms of getting an update with now our HR specialists that's available to kind of help us and provide us a bit more information. And at this point, I think our next meeting is not yet scheduled. We're going to discuss whether one is needed this month. If not, we'll likely look at September.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions, comments for Michelle? All right, great. Moving on to 4.4 vocational education. Jen?
Yes, we have not met since the last meeting. The next meeting will be in the fall of 2025 when school reopens. If you don't mind if I take a minute to talk about the programs there, I was meeting with a parent early this week, just a parent in the school, just for fun, and they did not know about Portland Pass and WRVC, that their child could go there for programs, so I really want to put it out there, they're amazing programs. I'll just highlight Portland's this time and I'll try to do WRVC's next meeting, but automotive collision, automotive technology, biomedical, careers in education, carpentry, commercial art, CTE exploratory, culinary arts, cybersecurity, dance, food service, horticulture, HVAC and plumbing, marine service, masonry, music, new media, outdoor education and leadership, and welding. Our students have access to all of these programs. How amazing is that? I think, what is it, 78 students we have going this year? Please, it's not too early to think about this, even in middle school, and start exploring the idea of taking advantage of these programs.
Great. All right. Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Jen? All right, great. Moving on to 4.5 ad hoc committees. Gorham Teaching and Learning Committee. Eric?
Teaching and Learning Committee has not met since our last meeting and we are not scheduled to meet again until the fall of 2025.
Great. Any questions for Eric? Seeing none. Anti-racism and Equity Committee. Our last meeting that we had was on May 22nd, really kind of wrapping up what we have done this year in regards to the committee and particularly some of the subcommittee groups that I've spoken about before, the Community Engagement Group, our Equity Toolkit, and Student Voice. A lot of what we talked about at our last meeting was obviously what we've kind of accomplished this year, but also how can we start off in September sort of on a good foot and some ideas that we have thrown out, kind of thinking about having maybe another community event in the fall, maybe not to the scale of the one that we typically have in the spring, but kind of looking again at the idea of empathy and how we can continue to discuss that and talk about it, not only in the schools, but also bringing in our community as well. So our next meeting will be in the fall of 2025 when school reopens. Moving on to Dropout Prevention Committee. Mia?
Yes, we met via Zoom on May 28th. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but they, I did review the minutes, they reviewed the goals of the committee and those are the following. To study the problems of dropouts, intruency, and the need for alternative education programs through K through 12th grade. Make recommendations for addressing the problems and submit the findings as a plan of action to the Gorham School Committee. Every school had representation at the meeting. They discussed the successes and the challenges that each school faces. There was a lot of data that was presented and the next meeting will be at the beginning of the next school year.
Great. Thanks, Mia. Any questions for Mia? Seeing none.
Seeing none. Moving on to Fiscal Sustainability Committee. Michelle?
Yes, so the Fiscal Sustainability Committee has concluded its meetings, but there is still a pending presentation that will be a report out to the Town Council and the School Committee jointly, and that is still in the process of being scheduled for later this summer or early fall.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Moving on to 5.0, Unfinished Business. 5.1, Second Reading of the Following Policies. Mia?
Bad timing on taking a drink. So yes, so these were a lot of what we discussed at our last meeting. Policy JLFA, which is the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Response. We, as a group, had questioned if this topic was currently covered in the K5 and the 6 through 12 curriculums, and Mr. Donahue did do some research with those administrators, and yes, indeed, they are covered in all of those curriculums. We also questioned how the policy impacts our pre-K partners, because that would be new this year. And the answer that was determined is that our pre-K partners are not required to teach if it's in our, teach it if it's in our policy. However, it's recommended that we share the curriculum resources with them, and we will certainly do that. We also questioned if this information was included in substitute and volunteer training, and we found out that it was currently in the substitute training and has now been added to volunteer training as well. For the next policy, IHBAL, which is the Grievance of Persons with Disabilities, the policy is actually being removed and replaced, because it really was a procedure. It's being replaced with Procedure AC-R, based on the recommendations from Drummond and Woodson. And the final policy that is up for second read tonight is IKF, which is the Graduation Requirements. And that is a policy that was rewritten recently to reflect the Gorham High School three-year plan regarding the technology program, just a change in those credits.
Thanks, Mia. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Policies JLFA, IHBAL, and IKF as presented.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Second?
Second.
Second by Jen. Questions, comments? All right. Great. Let's take a vote. We'd like to approve the following policies. All right. 6-0. Thanks, everyone. Moving on to 6.0, New Business. 6.1, Action Is Needed on Communication and Reports. None that we're aware of. Moving on to 6.2, Consideration and Action on the Appointment of Village School Principal, One-Year Position. Assistant Superintendent Donahue?
Yes, so there's a story that connects Items 6.2 and 6.3. So if you'll allow me, I'll begin with the story to give you some background. In early April, the principal position at Village Elementary became open when Jody Mezzanotti announced her transition to the new role with Educate Maine. We acted quickly to post the position, but unfortunately, the candidate pool was weak from the start. A 14-member hiring committee representing all key stakeholder groups reviewed the applications and unanimously agreed that the initial pool lacked a strong fit for Village. After extending the deadline, another three weeks, the revised pool remained unimpressive, although one candidate was interviewed after we finished up with the reference checks process, we felt would not be a good fit for Gorham. So rather than hiring somebody who wasn't the right fit for the role, a mistake which certainly can have a long-lasting consequence, we began exploring Plan B. And we're recommending a one-year interim appointment for both principal and assistant principal at Village for the 25-26 school year. This allows us to stabilize the building, focus on the current social and emotional needs of our students, and provide critical staff support while giving us the opportunity to relaunch a broader search early next year to secure a strong, permanent leader. So first, why Cheryl Fodder as interim principal? Cheryl has served as assistant principal at Village for many years, under both Ryan Porter and Jody Mezzanotti. She knows the school, the students, and the staff deeply. Her consistent, calm leadership and strong relationships make her an ideal stabilizing force for the transitional year. While Cheryl did not initially apply for the principal role, out of her own love for the AP position, she has agreed to step into the interim role with the understanding that it is for one year only, and she may apply for the permanent role next year if she chooses to do so. Cheryl's leadership will allow us to focus on addressing the increased social, emotional, and behavior needs of our students, and help staff navigate these evolving challenges. The second piece, and I'll just share that now all at once, is why Jen Baker for the interim assistant principal. So Cheryl, Heather, and I all agree Jen Baker is the best person to serve as interim assistant principal. Jen is a certified administrator with many years of experience in Gorham as a school social worker. She has built strong relationships with Village students and families, particularly those who are often the focus of behavioral and SEL interventions. Jen's expertise in social, emotional learning, mental health, and trauma-informed practice is exactly what Village needs right now. She's not yet an experienced administrator, but this one-year interim role gives her a chance to grow while keeping her deep SEL skill set in-house where it's needed most. To further strengthen, to further strengthen support for students and staff, we propose hiring a one-year social worker with time split between GHS and Village. This added resource will help staff better support students with behavioral and emotional challenges and continue building staff capacity for SEL work long-term. So I would recommend that Cheryl Fodder is approved for a one-year position, interim principal position at Village Elementary.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Donahue. So we'll start first with the Consideration and Action on the Appointment of the Village School Principal for a one-year position. Who would like to make a motion? Jackie?
I make a motion to approve Cheryl Fodder for the position of one-year interim principal at Village Elementary School for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thanks. Motion by Jackie. Second by Michelle. Questions or comments?
Yeah, just a comment. Thank you for, I know that you love your current role, Cheryl, and thank you for stepping up to take this interim position.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Thank you. Let's take a vote. 6-0. Yes, 6-0. I had to take a minute to count. Great. All right. Thanks, everyone. So that's an approval of that position. Let's move on to 6.3, the Consideration and Action on the Appointment of the Village School Assistant Principal Position, one year. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Jen Baker for the position of one-year interim assistant principal at Village Elementary School for the 2025-2026 school year.
Great. Motion by Jen. Second?
Second.
Second by Mia. Questions, comments? Michelle?
A thank you to you as well, but I do actually have a question on this one. So I noticed that we said that the one-year social worker will have time split between GHS and Village. I'm just curious about that split, because if we're losing a full position at Village with Jen moving up, doesn't that leave a full?
So that was the, that was the additional social worker position that we already were hiring for.
Gotcha.
We are looking to fill the social worker position that's left from Jen.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
That should have been added.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Let's take a vote. 6-0. Thanks, everyone. Congratulations to Jen and Cheryl. Thank you again so much. All right. Moving on to 6.4, Consideration and Action on the Appointment of Personnel. Assistant Superintendent Donahue?
Yes, so we have a, well, hiring season is currently still underway, and we have five names here for you to consider. If we have a Grade 5 teacher at Great Falls, Sarah Meal, Nicholas Hilton, Special Ed Resource Room Teacher at GHS, Jaclyn Mullin, a GMS strategist, Rachel Epling, one-year social worker at Village, and Bridget Tharp, a .5 occupational therapist.
Thanks, Dr. Donahue. Would anyone like to make a motion? Michelle?
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Sarah Meal, Nicholas Hilton, Jaclyn Mullin, Rachel Epling, and Bridget Tharp to their respective positions.
Motion by Michelle. Second? Second by Jen. Questions, comments?
Just a quick follow-up. So I just want to be, make sure that I understand. So Rachel Epling will be full-time at Village for one year, so she's going to replace Jen Baker?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Let's take a vote. 6-0. Excellent. And moving on to 6.5, First Reading of School Board Evaluation Policy, BAA. Mia?
Okay. So BAA is the School Board Self-Evaluation. The policy adjustment was reintroduced based on legal recommendation. It would require the school committee to conduct their self-evaluation in a public session versus the executive session as it currently is. The policy committee, and please chime in with me, we discussed it at length and could not come up with a recommendation, and really felt that this was a decision that needed to be brought forward to the whole committee and to sort of discuss the pros and cons in which way we would like to go. So we'd very much like to have a conversation about your thoughts.
Great. Thanks, Mia. Questions or comments? Right now?
Question, is now the time for that? Are you hoping to get that conversation now?
I think so. Would it be now?
Sure. Or, I mean, if folks feel prepared to do that now, but then we can also?
If not, you could certainly email me.
Yeah. Provide questions, and we can discuss it at our next workshop meeting at the end of the month. So I just, the only comment that I would have is I know we attended, I don't remember the name of the acronym of the?
MSMA.
Yeah. MSMA. And I remember attending a session that talked about self-evaluation, and it was a strong recommendation. We were the only ones in the room not doing it in an open session. So I think that I would, you know, agree with adding this language as you've written. That's just my personal comments.
Yes.
I concur with that. My former board, we did it in open session, and I would feel comfortable doing this, too.
Thank you.
All right. And if anyone else, again, has questions or comments or thoughts that they want to send over to Mia or Dr. Donahue before the next meeting, we can certainly do that. Great. Thanks, everyone. 7.0, Adjournment. Thanks, everyone.